Hasn't had to.
Oh, no, this is how you go.
Pretty much.
We also go off, we move the buttons forward. I don't want to be safe with hearing names.
Will, anybody else not coming?
Or another thing? We heard from Japana and Jennifer.
Okay.
Didn't hear from Ashley or they have a form.
Okay, well, it's it's seven o'clock, so why don't we start? I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the flexible agents and if you would lead us.
I call the agents to rely on the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, unregard, inclusive, literate and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with public comments. Limit them to five minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to make a public comment? Seeing no one, I'll close that section of the meeting. Move on to approval of the planning commission meetings for July 20th, 2020. Do we have any changes that we'd like to make? If not, go ahead and motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, second. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Okay, we're good to go on the minutes. And moving right on to you, Jennifer. So tonight, as I've been talking to you guys about the New River Valley housing study that was done, very, very well done. And it's exciting to see the things that were in it and tie that back to some of the actions that we've taken as a as a commission. So without due, I want to turn it over to you, Jennifer.
Thank you so much for having me. First, we're going to make sure this works. But I would love if this was a conversation and not just a presentation. So if you have a question midstream, just let me know. We can try to get it, so you don't have to hold it to the very end. And, okay. So if you have heard us present on this before, some of these beginning slides are going to be familiar, but we do sort of like to share how we got to this point. And so way back when we first started this, the impetus for this whole study came from some of our localities. So as the regional commission, for those of you that don't know, we serve all the local governments in the New River Valley. You all are our bosses, so to speak. And so we were hearing about some housing needs, data questions, where do we go from here? What do we do with some of the either challenges we're seeing or great things we're seeing? How do we address these things? And so that's, that's how this began. Folks wanting to know about, you know, what about our aging housing stock? What about our aging population? What about the impact of our universities? What about our lower income folks? Have enough housing? Are we supporting them well enough? Other areas of need? And then what can we do to address that? So really what we're trying to, you know, convey is that housing intersects with so much of what we do, even if, you know, we've got a transportation project. We have a housing development coming before you all. There's so many things that overlap with housing. And, and so that's what we wanted to address here. This is, it takes a village to raise a child and it takes a village to run the regional housing study. The commission was the lead agency. We were funded through a grant from the Virginia Housing Development Authority. And we quickly brought on board some consultants, some in our backyard, which is the Virginia Center for Housing Research at Virginia Tech. They were a huge lift on our data. We reached out also for policy and best practices with consultants housing Virginia. And then did some like housing conditions analysis with a group called CDB. Locally, those two orange bubbles are the local stakeholders that helped guide us throughout the process. We have a larger group, which is the consortium. It met quarterly and it represented a very large group of stakeholders within the region, local governments, nonprofits, bankers, lenders, realtors, that sort of thing. And then our leadership team was more representative of just our local government staff that met monthly to help, you know, guide us, direct us. Three parts to the study, data collection, talking with with experts in the community. We also did a public survey to really try to get some of that anecdotal data, what's happening, what people see. And then for what feels like a really long time, we've just been working, working, working on that final plan, which is getting closer every day. Okay, so I'm going to, and I'll try to keep you notified when I'm moving from regional data and when I have data that is town of Christiansburg specifically. So to start with, the New River Valley is our study area is also recognized as an MSA, which is a metropolitan statistical area. And it's a thing that works out really nicely because it is a census designation, among other things. And data is collected at the level of our region and it works out beautifully that includes just our five localities and doesn't leave out one or add in another. So it's really helpful for us for regional data. And it's also helpful because we see the region as a whole market. Most people don't think so closely about when they are crossing county lines. We function a lot as a region. Now down to the towns specifically, just as an example, there are a little over 12,000 jobs that are in town limits. 2,200 Christiansburg residents stay in Christiansburg and work. 10,000 people from outside of town limits come in every day. And then we are also outcommuting about 7,000 and change of folks. So you can see some are staying, some are leaving, a lot are coming in. And that's how our whole region functions. And I think the stat for how many folks live in the region but stay in the region to work is about 70% of us. So you can see that's really strong. It's not like we are a bedroom community and everybody leaves to go to their jobs. Okay, on the right, you see the entire region and the way that that's broken up. The orange is all of Montgomery County, but we have segmented out Blacksburg and Christiansburg specifically. In Christiansburg, 9,500 households. You can see the breakdown of owners and renters, which is actually about on par for the breakdown between owners and renters region wide. And, and some communities obviously sway that one direction or the other. Some more demographics, 32% of households. We have a number of 60 years or older. And as you might guess, our renters trend to be younger than homeowners. Okay. So I'm going to unpack this a little bit. When we think about housing, we have to think about what people, the kind of money that they have to spend. So I'm giving you the regional median income to say if you live in the region, 52,000 is what median household is earning. We consider housing costs affordable if you're spending no more than 30% of your take home pay on housing. So that equates to, as you see, about 1,300 in rent and about 1,300 for a mortgage and taxes insurance, which then equates to that 191 of purchase power. So let's compare that, those regional numbers to what's happening in town. And, and we can see that median home value is 182.3 with median owner costs. Under that 1,300 number is good and under, even further under that for, for rent. So we're just looking at the median. You know, we're not seeing huge discrepancy of a vast majority of people not being able to afford. But if, just a definition, for definition purposes, median is the middle number. So that means 50% of homes or incomes are higher than that number and 50%. Okay. This is meant to show that just housing costs are sometimes not the full picture. And so looking at transportation, it can be sometimes and is many times the second highest household cost that someone has. And so just the idea of moving farther out from a job center to save on housing is sometimes not the full picture because you are then making up for that cost sometimes to your detriment in transportation costs once you have them all together. But, but as we know, people make that, that trade off between their monthly housing cost and transportation. So the map that you see is actually showing that our town centers and employment centers, which in this case is Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Bradford, Pulaski, a little bit of Dublin. Those are still the most affordable places to live, even considering sometimes higher housing costs because once you add in that extra cost of transportation, it, it really starts to eat into that budget. It doesn't mean that it's still super affordable. What you can't really see is that the lightest color we have means that housing plus transportation is no more than 50% of your income. We don't have a locality that meets that for a median owner. The lowest that we get is 55%. And there is no magic number for, for housing and transportation costs, but getting above 50 is starting to get into, you know, some dangerous territory as far as affordability.
So if I'm allowed to ask you questions?
Absolutely.
So where, where is that locality, the lightest color currently?
It is, it's in Blacksburg and Christiansburg.
And then what do you all stack here? So what do y'all consider when you think about transportation? Is that like maintenance, gas? Of course, the cost of the car, insurance, parking?
Yeah, I don't know if the factors in the cost of the car itself, it probably is factored in monthly costs around, yeah, fuel and maintenance.
Okay, so not like, so if someone has a car paid off versus a lease, is that necessarily taken into account for cost?
Yeah, I'm thinking it's, you know, so for example, it's not about the purchase price of the house. It's about your ongoing. I don't know if they factor in the, the idea that there's car payment. That's certainly possible. So, you know, the, there's a lot, there's some assumptions here. Obviously, Blacksburg is not going to be the cheapest place to live and work if your job is somewhere else. But on the whole, because our town centers are our employment centers, there is just a, it swings that people, the majority of people are working in those places, even though you have some exceptions to that. So there's, there is some assumptions being made as far as like we're the best place to live and work. But in general, if you are living as close to your place of employment as possible, even if the housing is a little bit more expensive, but yeah, same for all stores. Right. This is a look at Christiansburg's housing stock. So the median year built in town is 1987. I'll show you a comparison there with the, the region being 1979. The town of Christiansburg, as far as the median year built, is actually the youngest locality in the region. Because nearly a quarter of the housing stock was built between 2000 and 2010. Looking at all, you're housing multifamily at 14%, and single family at 85%. But the whole thing about Christiansburg, and we're going to get to this later, is that there's a lot of diversity of what types of single family you have. So we broke it out a little bit here to show that while single family detached is still taking up the bulk of that, the presence of townhomes, duplexes and some of the manufactured mobile homes are still a pretty significant percentage of the town's housing stock. And I wouldn't be giving you correct data if I didn't acknowledge that the sort of squiggly lines, nice to the 7% and 10% are an approximation because we had a little less data there to be relied on. Demographics, regional on the left, Christiansburg town on the right. And you can see that for white households, it's about on par with the region as far as what's represented in the town. And then Christiansburg has more than disproportionate share of black households and less than proportional share of Asian households in the region. Cosburden households. So remind you that we said if you are cosburdened, it means that you are consistently spending more than 30% of your income on, on housing. And we say when that's happening, there, there are sometimes certain things you're making a trade off between. So those who are consistently spending more than that 30% are, you know, less likely to have their children in educational enrichment or sports, any things that have those ancillary costs that they just don't have the margin for. We have a percentage of households that are actually spending more than 50% of their income on housing. And those types of things put you into, do I buy food or do I pay my rent? So overall, 28% of households in the New River Valley are what we consider cosburdened. Not, just don't have enough data to give a reliable number when you get into households of color to determine if they are seeing a higher proportion of cosburdeness. So I'm giving you a range here. As you saw of people of color, we have just the highest number of black households as opposed to Asians or other ethnic groups. But the range is wide, as you can see, I had to build in a little bit here. There, but as few as 27%, which would be on par with what we're experiencing. But up to 37%. Our guess is that it is somewhere in the middle. So market characteristics. We, as part of this study, graciously allowed data from our local realtors and got the MLS data, historic MLS data. And so these are some of the numbers. For, for Christiansburg, you can see trending upward as far as what the median sales price has been lately and a 34% decrease since 2002. Median days on the market for the New River Valley was nine. Last year, Christiansburg was seven. We have shared this anecdote a couple of times that two of our northern Virginia communities, Pennsylvania and Fairfax County, if we look at their, so let's see if the town, I think it was 2018 data. Look at the hottest month of their market, which is March. Their numbers are 24 and 26. So what we're seeing is folks looking to buy have very little time in which to decide and, and snatch a house before it's, we'll forget. 85% decrease of days on market in just the last three years. The other thing we look at is just market vacancy. How many homes are for rent or for sale? Do we have a good supply? And we say that a good rule of thumb is somewhere between 2% to 7% market vacancy is a quote unquote healthy number. So as a region, we are on the lower end, but still healthy. The town of actually Christiansburg and Blacksburg are as low as 1%, which means fear type. And everyone's probably heard stories of people trying to, to find housing in the last several years and multiple offers or cash offers, where it goes in 24 hours and those sorts of things. So if you are wanting to be thoughtful of the market, you do not have time to do that.
I get a brochure about once a week, we'll pay cash for your house.
Yeah. Yeah. We obviously don't have really a lot of data to quantify this, but anecdotally, when we were talking, we held several focus groups as mentioned earlier. We sat around a table with some lenders and realtors and, you know, they're telling us stories of these pocket sales, which means it never even hits the market. An agent just knows they have a seller and then this other agent friend knows they have a buyer. They put them together before it even hits the market to just work it out and we're selling a lot of houses. So if you were trying to go it without a realtor, even harder.
Agent of her.
Yes.
I don't know if we could get to this later, but from a housing availability standpoint, the days on the market, obviously it's a tight market. Are there any general effects that that has on certain, certain population groups? Does that mean it's harder for a first time?
Yes. We'll get to that, we'll get to that a little bit. We get into it a little bit more when I'm, when I was talking about sort of impacts regionally. But yes, I'll highlight a couple of observations that we're seeing from that in just a second. This is sales price by locality. So you can sort of see Christiansburg in the purple and how that's been trending. We're still, we're still updating all of our graphs. But interestingly enough, I can tell you that for 2019, everybody's median sale price went up except for Montgomery and Blacksburg. So it just must have been the, the type of, of home that was getting sold, whether it was more comments or, you know, something in that moment. But as you can see, we're, we're just trending, we're just trending up. Okay, here's two little questions. So yes, the, let me just go back one. So the prices here, we all, we all know stories of, of really expensive homes. As far as median, our median sale prices are not astronomical. It's our tightness that is making our market difficult to get into. Things are moving too fast for there to be enough inventory to serve all the people that we're looking for. So we heard this and there's anecdotal things coming out. We've heard from some of our employers that they're just having a hard time recruiting the talent that they want because then people come here to, to rent or buy. We have a double whammy with renting is not easier in our communities because of university pressure. Especially if you show up in November and have to rent because of this. Single family on the market. And so they are nervous about bringing talent here because they just, when you're, when you're housing from afar, you would literally almost have to, you know, put an offer at a house site unseen sometimes if you want to move fast enough to, to get in. And most people just aren't comfortable with that, if it's any area to them. Had another realtor share that he could not remember the last time he had done a closing for a first time homebuyer in Blacksburg. So the, it doesn't mean that homes are being sold necessarily for too much money. It means that a cash offer, an investor owner is so much more attractive on the offering table than a first time homebuyer who either has a contingency or down payment or needs to be approved for financing and has to wait to get that through. I'm just going to go with the person who's handling cash. And so it makes the first time homebuyer, it makes a low, low income homebuyer, rental renter, and it makes the new employee very difficult to control. And then we found out from the survey we did, even folks trying to move up or around in the region are having, are expressing frustration at how patient they have to be to, to get in. It's not all bad news. As we talked about, Christiansburg is already offering some of the most diverse housing stock in the region. And that's something that we're giving you kudos for. Even though you have the youngest, it still doesn't mean that you don't need to be anticipating those maintenance and upgrade things that are just flat out needed in homes S A and S H. Even 1987, if you haven't done some sort of systems or upgrade, your home is starting to be not data. And then just that preserving affordability helps to keep the competitive edge in Christiansburg as we see how to get home values. So before I get into sort of what we're doing with all of that data and some of those observations, did we have any questions?
Or we get the PowerPoint slide or some guests or something else?
Yeah, it's on the desktop now, so.
Fantastic. It's some good data and I'm like.
Oh, yeah.
It's all in my mind, I know. And, and obviously we're, you know, you'll, you'll get to see this in the report. Should it ever be completed? And, and Christian, the way this is being set up, we call it the regional plus local because you'll see a whole regional perspective of data and findings and recommendations. And then each locality, to be Christiansburg, will have a standalone. We'll see its own data and findings and strategies. Okay. And I'm trying to be somewhat high level here. If we're going to dive in deep into the weeds, there might be some things I have to get back to you on as I'm trying to keep all of the locality's strategies coming into memory. But preserving existing housing stock. So there, there are two strategies that sort of speak to that for Christiansburg. I listed them at the top, but there's some overlap. So I thought I could address them both together. Again, Christiansburg's housing diversity is something that you want to advertise, you want to be proud of, you want to keep going. Pulling out that townhomes piece, you know, 18% is, is a large enough quantity that it was a reliable number, even though it feels like townhouses are sort of a, you know, segment of just a nuanced part of the housing stock, 18%. And as we sort of talked about, they end up being attractive option on, on both sides. A first time homeowner, because the price point is usually a little bit lower. But then it's also attractive for investor owners. And so how does the town manage that? I know townhomes, even if they began as, as homeownership, it is sometimes, you know, not just the university proximity with undergrads necessarily, but some of our, you know, graduate doctoral, VCOM, vets, you know, those types of folks that are not necessarily wanting to get into a homeownership opportunity, but don't necessarily want to be in student housing in Blacksburg, is very attractive to be here. And so town just needs to be aware of what's, of the impact of that. So trying to encourage some of those improvements and ongoing maintenance. You know, that comes with some consequences perhaps for non-maintenance, but really trying to be more on the proactive side of that. How can we, you know, want folks and encourage folks to, to keep this housing up? And then looking at not just a town-led initiative, but collaborating with other agencies that might be in this, in this space as well.
Jen, two questions. My first one, when you talk about the diversity of Christiansburg in housing stock, what specifically are y'all recognizing as a good thing about that diversity? Like, like when you say diversity, what, what are y'all referencing? What are those variables there?
The pie chart that I brought up earlier, that there are not just single family detached opportunities, the townhome, the duplex, the multifamily. You're not one dimensional in the types of housing that you offer, which means you're attractive more than just one type of buyer. If we all lived in 3,000 square foot, single family detached homes on, you know, two acres, neither man can enter into that. But you're offering different styles, different price points, different, you know, even think about the maintenance and upkeep for a townhome. even think about, um, the maintenance and upkeep for a townhouse. A lot of times for a small age away, you're not mowing grass, you're not reshingling the roof. You're not putting mulch, um, on the landscape. And some of that responsibility is off of you, but you could perhaps enter into homeownership, build equity, move on to eventually get a larger lot, a larger square footage. And so it's, it's, it's just attractive to a larger mix of people.
My second question that I had was, um, on a couple of slides ago, you talked about the median age and I want to say it was like maybe the youngest I saw was like 24 or 25 for the ownership or renting. Often sometimes what we hear is concern about college or undergraduate students coming into these townhomes and renting them or apartments. Do y'all have data on how many undergraduates actually live or rent or own in Christiansburg?
Undergrad, no. We, we can get at certain things that include students. But it's hard. It, it's, yeah, it's, it's harder to get at. So for example, we can see the student impact, for example, on, on income because it's, it affects the region's numbers. Our students, the accounting, our census, um, thank you for this. And so we have to do some tricks and things like that if we're wanting to look at, um, data that doesn't include that. Sometimes we can exclude them, sometimes it's just too wrapped up in, in other things. So I don't have a count, um, as far as student ownership. Because, because of the demographics just cross too tightly.
Anecdotally, I feel like I can respond and say that we don't really have typical college age undergraduate students living in Christiansburg where that concern comes up just because of my affiliation with the university. But when we have people concerned about apartments or duplexes or townhomes going in, that's usually one of the first things that they bring up. And so it'd be nice just to say if there was data to say that's not something you have to be concerned about or yes, that's a potential reality.
So that brings up a couple of points. We put in a apartment complex, but it was a very, um, high-end apartment complex. So, uh, and I think it would be tough for the, the students. And I think what was also agreed there that the owner had to be a living tenant. And I'm talking about over by the villas.
Yeah, I think that went in before I came to the question.
Okay. And that was, we were looking for young executives or, or grad students, you know, looking for a place away from campus, something really nice that we're not going to have, you know, uh, 2:00 in the morning, uh, blaring music or something. So, uh, so that was a good option for Christiansburg there. The other thing that we're seeing in diversity is the patio homes. Quite a bit demand for those and it's, it's surprising because it's, it's, it's another option to a townhome. But it's sort of detached, but it also comes with the maintenance that does the yards for you. So from a retired person, uh, very attractive, like the villas, very popular. And we're seeing more demand, more request in Christiansburg for patio type homes that we have approved, uh, most recently. So, uh, I think, I think we're trying to hit that, that demand that they're trying, that, that you've indicated here, uh, in all areas, you know, whether it's a retired couple or it's a young person starting off that, you know, can't afford a major home or doesn't want to afford, uh, you know, or take on the maintenance and responsibility for all that.
Yep, you're absolutely right. And, and sometimes we've seen that the boomers wants and needs, there's a lot of overlap with the millennial and even Gen Z'ers coming in and their wants and needs. Or smaller, walkable. Maybe the one level is a little bit more attractive to, to the boomer as they're trying to think through their, you know, Asian place. But there, there's a lot of that and that's another sort of, you know, uh, feather in the hat for Christiansburg to be responding in that way. Because we're, we're just hearing more and more people want that. And it's a, it's a, it's a hard line between what you feel like you're hearing people say and what developers are willing to, to build. And so you obviously don't have, uh, all the control as a locality in, in determining what developer builds. But, you know, trying to find that sweet spot of, of encouraging these things. And then once they do it and see how popular, you know, they're immediately, um, have contracts and everything, or there's no vacancy, it's a multifamily situation. It encourages the developer to go, go back for, for more, so.
Right, that's what we're seeing.
So, yeah, good job. And so to that point, um, I was going over this, I had to, to give this kind of, I was going over this presentation with my, uh, colleague, um, and she was like, what is going on with that horrible, that horrible sticker? And I was like, this is me saying that you get a sticker on your worksheet for doing a good job in this and to not give up. And she's like, okay, I mean, if you want to put that in. So that is, that's me saying, you're doing good work, here's your, your star. And we want to tell you to keep going. So my point earlier about, uh, employers having a first time bringing employees, what they're hearing is not just we can't find housing, but it's we can't find housing, A, that doesn't get snatched up so fast, that are near things that we want. We want to be on transit, we want to be walkable, we want to have the restaurant, ice cream, coffee brewery close by. If you give us a great house that's in the middle of nowhere and still not serving us. So this is a little bit of a, you're doing it and here's the encouragement to keep growing by really trying to look at those things together. I was trying to isolate some of the Christiansburg, um, responses to the survey. These are the things that they're enjoying. And so we just need the town who thinks about these things to keep providing, um, some of these things. I think Christiansburg and Blacksburg probably have some of the shortest commute times in, in the region. People appreciate that. So it is, don't leave out your community development when you're thinking of housing and don't leave out your housing.
So again, so one other thing just to add. We, uh, we approved a town center that goes along with some of the needs that we're seeing too here. Where it's, um, it's going to be by the villas, that patio homes, by the apartments there. And it's going to be a walkable trails to the town center, which is going to have businesses, restaurants. And it's also going to have, I think we say, um, townhomes and apartments too. Right, alright, so all in that one facility. And the location is right across from the Huckleberry Trail is the mall. So all that is, is right there. And I think that's what the whole community is really looking at is that, that opportunity to have short commute to work or being able to have access by bike pass to go to different businesses. And when even the, the, the input that we got from the villas residents, um, that were retirees said, at first it was like, why are you putting this in there? And then we heard from them and they were like, no, 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 this is fantastic. We can walk from our patio home to a restaurant. And, um, they're even talking about an emphasis theater for music. So they were just loving the idea. So, uh, and I, I think we did a good job on, on that as well, passing that through.
And, and what is perhaps, so I have a little bit of experience with, with you all last year, um, with, with the town. The regional commission did a placemaking plan, um, that looked at downtown in town in Cambria. And so I have a little bit of extra insight, having done that work, that, um, I think will show up as this gets fleshed out more. It's sort of the, the reminder that when you have control of new developments, these things are maybe a little, maybe a little bit easier because it's on developed land. Some of the infill opportunities, um, in downtown, in Cambria, um, don't overlook those because, um, people want to be there if we can just give them a reason to be there. And so, um, it has to go hand in hand. If you put housing there, but there's nothing to do. If you put the things to do, but it takes people a long time to get there. That's probably less of the problem, um, because both of those communities have housing and even midtown really for that, from that perspective. But for Cambria and downtown, you know, there is a lot of existing housing. Now just make it the place to be, um, and not, and don't forget this, you know, for those folks as well. Continuing a conversation around, uh, diversity of, of housing offerings and that preservation of affordability. An accessory dwelling unit, um, program, we're saying expand, um, because it's not, that it's not allowed, um, now. And, um, Will was, was filling in sort of, you know, how Christiansburg handles that now. But this is more of a, of an encouragement to think how that can be expanded even further. So accessory dwelling units, they could, uh, they are small homes. They can either be, as you see, um, part of the home, like you run out your basement. Attached to your home, which someone does an addition, um, a separate entrance perhaps, or completely detached where they build what may look like a garage or is a garage, but they're sort of above the garage apartment. Those are kinds of examples of those. And when I say preserve affordability, this could actually go, um, two ways if it was expanded. One, it can, uh, keep a homeowner. Maybe they've gone down to a one, a single family burner, um, or a single member burner. And this provides a little bit of extra income to keep them in that home, to keep them being prospering. But it also could provide, uh, more affordable housing to a person that's renting it. Because it's smaller, it's on an existing lot. They're not going through a big property management that raises rents 5% no matter what every year. Their landlord is in their front row and they go knock on the door if they have permission of that kind of thing. That's not exactly how it's set up right now, but this is sort of an encouragement to maybe look at that in the future as both providing income to the owner and being a lower price point for someone who is renting. So it just gives them that other option. There are a couple of what we're calling partnership strategies. So this is where the town of Christiansburg is included, but we're also kind of pushing for some partnerships with, uh, with Blacksburg and the county. So this is looking at that like 460 business corridor where as you're driving, you barely notice that you actually hit all three localities in very short succession. You know, those, uh, are being managed, but somewhat individually, um, right now. And so this is to sort of look at a way to expand some of those existing collaborations that are already happening. But maybe we could blend, um, some usage, some infrastructure, some transportation as well. We've got to push on with it. We need to coordinate this a little bit more. There's a dead zone where, you know, if you need to get from point A to point B, you're sort of walking. And what, what does that look like? So we're unpacking a little bit. And then, has anyone heard of a community in the interest? Which is fine, okay. So this is actually something that, uh, the town of Blacksburg is looking at quite extensively right now. But, uh, when we talked with all three of you all, we realized this really won't function at its best if all three aren't involved, um, county and both towns. And so this is where, uh, there's a nonprofit organization that is, is set up, um, to manage this or an existing one who take this on to manage. And it basically takes the cost of land out of the equation. Which in our towns, right now more heavily Blacksburg, but in our towns and some of our, maybe even some of the villages, purchasing a home outright is just a barrier. But if we were to remove the price that land enters into the equation and households only buying the, um, the home itself, but long term leasing the land, it brings affordability to a, a point that, that they could for. And so it is probably mostly care exports ownership, but it could function as, as a rental as well. And so it's about that this nonprofit owns the land, whether they purchased it or donated it and it is in perpetuity part of the land trust. And then homes are transacted, um, just the homes. And it, it best preserves that ongoing affordability. Some of you may know I'm the staff for the New York Valley Home Consortium, which is federal dollars and, and we struggle with this affordability in perpetuity. There's always that question of, so at the end of X amount of years, when our agreement stops, this could turn over to market rate and how do we feel about that? Do we, do we like putting funds into creating affordable housing for it to turn over to market rate? And then the same problems reintroduced. So like I said, the town's been looking at this, um, but really wants Christiansburg and the county to be involved as well. So we're sort of unpacking what that could look like. And as the last bullet point states, it could even be something that if it went really well, we could offer to some of our other localities in the region that may not have the capacity to manage one, but would love to join in to this region.
Jen, is that more, um, like someone buys a massive piece of land and puts a lot of houses on it? Or could that be, I buy a land here and I buy a quarter acre here and buy a half and, and just do it individually that way?
It could be both, yes. So they could be scatter site and still be part of the trust. Which is also helpful because not many of us just have hundreds of acres.
No, like 20 acres and that just, that's a town.
So it'd be like a parcel here, four parcels here, um, that, that sort of thing. And then that's all. That was a lot. Again, I was trying to, to not give you too much into the weeds, but the final report will sort of unpack a lot of these things, um, more regional data, more town data and, uh, more, a lot more unpacking into each of the individual strategy options. Thanks for that.
I love all the data from here. I think that's great. You know, because people have made different questions about this. How many people, what's the median income? And like, I'm not really sure.
Let me, let me ask you this, Jen. So I mean, you know, we'll kind of allude to this, that we hear folks say they want more patio homes or they want more of this. But my, my concern with that is are we hearing from a small portion of people and making an assumption that it's the broader community? How, how do we know where the actual need is? So you talked about the importance of our diversification. But where are the, did y'all identify any gaps in what's missing? So we know like affordable homes in this importance of saying under 30% of one's income. But are there recommendations on like where we should focus? Like more duplexes, more homes at around a hundred thousand dollars, more homes around 50,000 or, um, like mobile homes? I guess I'm curious when people come before us, right? Because we're not out there saying, okay, you know, build up, build this kind of home here. My thought is, is that too expensive for the need in our community? And where's the data that tells me I'm going to vote no? Because what we really need is this and we need to send a message to the developers that they need to focus their energy here, even though it may not be the biggest money maker. It's the gap in our community. Do y'all find that?
So interestingly enough, uh, this comes out more as a finding regionally. But what we actually need is more housing all along the income spectrum. Because what we're finding, um, is that the homes that get snatched up the fastest are probably between 175, 250, 150 to 250, 1 to 275, somewhere in that range because it just appeals to so many people. But what we're finding is that your more marginalized folks, your first time homebuyers, your lower income, um, or, you know, just entering the workforce kind of things, um, they're getting, they're getting beat out. But what, what we're thinking is that if homes were being built slightly above that price point, it would still be affordable to some of the folks coming down and purchasing the smaller units. And it would give And it would give some breathing room in the market. So you know, when I say all along the income ladder, it doesn't mean now they all need to be 800 to a million dollar homes. But the 350 to 450 is actually still an important piece. Because we, we believe there are folks who can, who can do that successfully. Hopefully allowing more flexibility for the lower price points, but we need the lower price points too.
So like they might be in a $200,000 home, but they can afford a 450,000. And so they're preventing someone from buying that, is that kind of to think in like that cheaper house or?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know if the gap is quite that wide, but yes. And you think about if I'm a well qualified buyer and I find something that's cheaper than what I can afford. That's great for me, but I'm not thinking about the, how a handful of people who that's all they could afford. That I have beat out because I'm just so much more qualified and I don't have some of the financing restrictions. So I think we give a number of region wide, 14,500 folks, this is owners and renters. Need more affordable housing, which means 14,500 households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. So that does still need the subsidized rentals, the subsidized homeownership opportunities. But it also means some of the mid-range and slightly upper income level too. Just don't have enough housing, period. And that's gets us back to the tightness of our market keeps us coming competitive. Because things are going so fast. We just don't have enough for the people who realize that this area is awesome. So one thing I have learned in this, so I didn't come in as a data expert, that's why we partnered with Virginia Tech. But I have learned a lot along the way. And to give an exact number is apparently a known, because then people fixate on that number. It's like, okay, well, what's my share of that number? Should we do a deduction or a meeting? And it doesn't exactly work like that, but we can tell you, these folks for sure aren't living in housing affordable. And we, we need to free that up. And then our days on market is too low. And so we know we need more options so that just anything with a roof gets a contract immediately. That just shouldn't be the case. I don't think academically there's a hard pass number, but 30 days as a median days on market is like a safe place, happy place to be. Right now, you guys are setting.
Chance to shuffle.
It's just really, really tight.
Good for a seller, really good for a buyer.
Right, right, yeah, totally, totally seller's market. We don't need to pay the stager a lot of money, we just need to stick up for sales.
Well, and not to compare Christiansburg to a big city like LA where my son lives. But he had been trying to buy a condo for years. And pre-approved everything with the bank, down payment, ready to go. Every time he went for it, cash. And the only way he was able to buy it is similar to what you said. Someone in the condo that he was renting was moving to a thicker condo. And they told him about it and said, hey, you got first dibs. Otherwise it's cash, it's cash and it just, it's unbelievable. So, so for a young person, they're really behind an eight ball a little bit. Buying some of the houses here, like you said, that, that people can afford more, but they choose to buy the patio home that's brand new for 280,000. A young person, first time homeowner. They're going to be stretching that to say 30% of what their pay bonus.
Yeah, and I mean, trying to get a little bit more context. So you know, it's easier for renters to enter a cost burden situation because there's not an underwriting process involved. I signed the lease and now it's my burden to pay whatever I signed up for. It's a little bit harder to get into a home being cost burdened. But as we know, life, life happens. If you've had some event where you were a two-person, two-income household and you drop to one. Something that changes how affordable my house is really fast. And sometimes those things are happening, you know, outside of control. A layoff, a medical event, of, of, you know, anything like that, that could get into. And had, I don't know if I, that's going to stay important, I'll come back to it here.
Yeah, just, what are the thoughts on the current situation with COVID? On how that could impact the housing market now, like what we're seeing already? And then what you think of what we need to be preparing for? Cause I mean, when we approved all this, you know, what we've approved over the past year, I'm thinking, you know, oh, that restaurant probably isn't going to go in anytime soon.
Right. So I spoke with a Realtors group, sort of giving a similar presentation a couple of months ago. And they, they shared that it was some sort of conflicting data. Like there were fewer, something like fewer transactions, but a higher volume compared to this time last year. Something where it just wasn't completely weak. And I think that their, their thought is that the impact to the newer rivalries market because of COVID is probably going to be a very brief, like not even close to what we endured for the, you know, the way it crashed. Which even for our region was still very minor when we looked at others. So we just don't, there's so much that is going on here, almost no matter what. We don't see huge ruts that we can't get out of. For commercial implications, you're, you're right. I think there are several folks that rely on foot traffic or people gathered or, you know, all those things that have taken, hidden. I don't know how the impacts of that will, will play out into the future. You know, we speculate, will we go back to Invernal? Was something always the difference? What, what is the future of Invernal there? But as far as people still buying and selling homes, it's still happening. I think there was a brief pause for us, maybe in March, April, where everyone held their breath for, you know, 30 days. And then it was like, well, I still need to buy that house. So they're, they're, maybe they're doing, you know, safer walkthroughs or virtual walkthrough or those sorts of things. But we're still transacting houses even like in the south of the world. Oh, and I know what I was going to say. So Jen, back to your point about how we know what to improve. I, I think if developers are able to make money on the less than luxury huge lot homes. You know, they're going to go where the money is. I think they have balked at some of the price points people are asking for. Because for us, this is one of our regional strategies, there's a, there's a, it's not just land costs. It's construction and labor costs. And so we have the double whammy of some materials being more expensive here. Because we don't have the economy scale that Invernal could do that. But we also are at a deficit in skilled labor in the trades to do it. And so you're paying more of a premium, people are really cruising around. At least when we discussed some of these things with developers and builders in the region, that's sort of what they were saying. They're like, I know people would buy a 175 to 225 house all day long. I can't build it for that. And so for the new developments, we can't get the price points that some of those more moderate income earners want. We need to build slightly more expensive to free up our existing housing, which can reach those price points. For some of those more moderate price points. So we can't, without subsidy, we can't, we can't be building 175 and it be a quality product. It's just developers aren't going to be able to.
And even, just even the ones that we've approved recently, just construction costs in the last couple of months has skyrocketed. So I'm even thinking about the ones you've approved that they want to start building. I'm like, those are not going to hit the, the price point, they're going to have to go higher just because of building costs.
The other good problem that's hitting them is, is when this first started, they didn't see a inventory problem. Because there was still product out there, but now they're starting to see it. If you're looking at a good example, so I've been involved recently with the church having cutters put on and things. And the order was there and they, they had it and we're going to get it in time. But anyone that's coming in now is going to wait because the production has to catch up. And that's just one area, you're seeing that all over now. The production and construction is now fading there because the supply isn't there.
Yeah, the, the trends are interesting, the waves of what it takes to catch up. Because even as I say, we don't have enough housing. Just out of Waxburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery, collectively, the three of you are putting thousands of units into the world. The greatest of Waxburg's is by and large student housing. But even that is a good thing because you're attracting the students to student housing. And not what could otherwise be single family housing. Waxburg is obviously struggling with preserving that single family housing for actual homeowners and not student rentals. So even, even though their numbers for single family are very low in comparison, it's potentially through, I mean, as long as we don't keep adding 5,000 students in here. I know some of that is just catching up. So that's a caveat. But if we can keep the students in student housing, if it opens up, what, what has slowly turned to student rental? And the shiny of student housing is just more attractive.
And Jen, I think the other thing that's, that's working in our advantage in selling homes and the demand, even during COVID, is the interest rates. The interest rates are so low right now. And, and with people that have been waiting to buy homes and, and now they're seeing interest rates so low. That's another push for them to say, okay, well, I have to get a home. When do I buy a home? Do I buy it now? And interest rates are so low that, you know, it's, it's a great advantage to jump in while they're like that. And then they can afford a, a much bigger home or a more expensive home. And maybe it puts them back into that 30% range a little bit easier.
How long do you anticipate like the tightness of, you said seven days from the average? Cause I remember in 05, I bought my first house in Chesapeake. And we would be on our way to a, to a showing and it'd be under contract by the time we get there. So my wife, having that in mind, the first house we sold bought back was only 20 years. How long do you think that, that trend, I mean, do you see it? I mean, it can't last this long forever, okay?
It happened to me and that was eight years ago. And it's from what my experience with that is, I mean, our house was, it was on the market for four hours when we put the bid on. Because we had been looking for four months. And it's either you find a fixer upper of someone that has never remodeled anything since the 60s. Or it was out of price range and that's.
Which also takes a certain amount of, that might even be harder. That's why I think it's so important, you know, when we talk about maintaining housing stock. Cause you don't want to have inflated is not the right word, like a, almost a deflated. Where it looks like your housing is portable, but really it's because it all needs 30, 40, 50,000 dollars of renovations. And a first time home buyer is probably not able to put a down payment on the home and then not finance the renovations. And a rehab loan is even a harder product to get into as a first timer. I think the interest rates are higher, it's just, it's a dicey game. And so either they walk, they buy the house and don't pay the renovations that it probably desperately needs. Or it turns just as much into, you know, someone who's better qualified because they've come in, buy and afford to do the renovations. So you're almost hiding the cost, right? It's 180, but it needs 60,000 renovations, it's still like 200,000 dollars a house. To, to your question, it, it comes down to when will we have enough stock for it to not be so tight? When we have some breathing room? So I don't think I had in this presentation, but we had a historic days on the market chart for the region. And it went back to 2002. And our numbers hover, I don't know, sometimes upwards of 50, 60, 70 days. And we sort of bounce around there for a little bit. You see a slight decrease up to 08, spikes up a little bit again as things crash and homes just start settling in. But pretty much since 15, it's just been plummeting. And it, it's, there's probably a lot of reasons why. Growth in new businesses, growth in the universities. Waxburg and Christiansburg get listed in best places to retire, like all those things probably create some sort of perfect storm. But we have been plummeting. When did I say 85% decrease in just four groups? You know, it's huge. And so I don't exactly know all the reasons why, but yeah, until less people want to live here or we have more housing to offer, it's going to, it's going to be tightly. Waxburg was at seven days on market in 18, dropped to three, which was 2018. I mean, we're going to get some more, we're fixing to go much.
I had a coworker who just left my company. He put his house in the market at 7:36 in the morning, by 8:10, the contract was off. And I was, I was like, he told me, he said, um, I was just finally on work and then I went back to law first. I come back, he's like, houses on the contract, I'm like, you can't, you better get it. Yeah, I mean, it's going that fast and I can't see. It just reminds me of 05 when I bought it, but I also remember what happened in 08 when I tried to sell it. So that's just kind of concerning to me. Cause when I got a promotion over at the Michigan Market Tank. And I spent the next year and a half trying to sell it. So.
I mean, yeah. I bought my first house in 07 and sold in 2016. Sold it quickly, but sold for less than you paid for it in 2007, after owning for nine years.
Yeah, 2008 was a killer.
It was heartbreaking.
I bought my house, it was a townhouse back in 05, it was 125. I ended up having to sell it in 2016 for 125. It took that long, you know, I sat for that long. Had a renter in between and then I had to redo the house, but I mean, it's, it's just kind of concerning because I mean, I, I remember like I said, rushing, trying to get to a viewing and then okay, finally got a house, but now, I don't know, it's just kind of concerning those parts. What happens if it does stop?
I actually have a friend in Dublin who's playing a dangerous game. And he put his house on the market with a huge price up. I said, well, are you ready to move? Cause someone could come in and, you know, and someone retiring from outdoor too, especially for this region. Be careful, I said.
And I'm hearing stories of, I don't know if anyone's ever bid on anything on eBay, but you can sort of set your price, I'll pay 50 bucks for that. But in case somebody outbids me, here's how high I'll go. Just build that. Folks are building in escalation clauses into their offers to say, I'll offer you 400,000. But in case somebody outbids me, I'm authorizing now to go up to 450. So if anyone comes in in between us, I'm automatically outbidding them. And that's how houses are being sold.
That would be my question Jen, is if we're seeing an increase in, you know, cause like when I, like when I go and look at my house on the market floor. because like when I like when I go and look at my house on the market floor without putting it for sale, just like the estimate, yeah. Are we seeing houses sell for higher than they're actually assessed at because of the seven days? So a house might be assessed at two hundred thousand, but it's actually going for two fifty because there's just so many folks that someone's like, I'm willing to pay fifty thousand dollars over market price. Are we, I mean, are we seeing that, like?
Anecdotally, yes. And the thing with those offers is just talking with a coworker this week. Because that's also, when you think as a seller, I need to make sure I don't list it for more than face value and no one will buy it. That is not the fear anymore. Because these buyers will pay that, pay over that if they really wanted and bring the difference to the table. So that when the appraiser says, well, this is only worth four hundred and your offer is for four thirty-five, I was, I'm just giving thirty-five.
Which then limits folks, right? Because if you're financing, the bank says, you've only got this. You can't exactly.
Exactly. And that's why I'm saying for those tighter markets, that's happening. And so there's no chance as a first time home buyer that you can compete with that in any way. So if we had more places for those cash shopper escalation clause people to go, it would take the pressure off some of our, your pool. Or, you know, I I actually think this just comes down to an individual home buyer. But I've heard of home buyers saying, even though you're sitting with a cash shopper waving it in my face, I only want to sell to an occupant. And so as a seller, you could choose to, you know, select that way. But but obviously, that just comes down to a case by case basis. But I do know some folks who have won housing bids that way because they were very clearly a young family. And the owner, seller, knew that and said, actually, I choose you instead of the the investor owner. Because I just value this.
That's hard. I know that, right, to 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 have them give the check and balance to say, I'm gonna, absolutely. I'm gonna give up thirty thousand dollars because I wouldn't do the greater good decision here.
Yep.
I have a question. I'm a veteran, military veteran. Do you have any any data regarding how many veterans in the area regionally have been able to utilize an VA loan? You know, as far as how many houses would be purchased by a veteran?
I I don't actually. I don't think it's it's a sort of census level thing, but perhaps those making the loans, like perhaps you could you could check in with with the VA loan folks who are handling those to see how many are transacting. But I don't know. We have the numbers. I haven't looked up for this. Yes, I know that there's there's lending assistance there, but there's some parameters, right? Then then restrict what you could be eligible for.
Yes, and it all, I mean, it all depends on income and how much you want to put down. My first house, I used a conventional loan. I was twenty-two at that point. And I was in the service at that time. But this house, I use my MIB loan. And I said, I'll be using a better thing now that I'm a little more smarter home buyer. And I had a check cut to me, had closing. That's how it had worked out. But I was just wondering, because it's a, I know a lot of military veterans. A lot of people I work with, they've they're coming straight out of the military and they're looking for homes. And I was just wondering, is there any data? Because a lot of people, you know, the typical, the typical enlistment range is four years. So a lot of these younger people are coming, starting college right at twenty-two, like as soon as they get out of the military. I was just wondering if you had any data on that.
Yeah, and I wonder, I was not personally sifting through all the MLS. There are a million different data points that are entered into that. So we obviously focused on CS price, days on market, those sorts of things. But I wonder if Mel is here, she would know. But I could check as to whether the type of loan was a column that they're tracking so that we could see how many transacted with.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you.
Jen, thanks.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
That was really good.
Go enjoy your home.
Yeah.
Really hard on you.
Okay, let's move on to point number five. Discussion of potential amendments to chapter forty-two zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code with purpose of clarifying the allowance of architectural projections such as roofs, eaves, windows, porches, decks into minimum required yards. So just to to kick this off a little bit, the subcommittee meeting, a group met and went through several versions of restating this the best way we could. And the the staff has done an excellent job in in taking from our discussions, recommendations, and making it very easy to read and clarifying exactly what is meant. This all came up from requests from developers that were questioning some of the 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 way that the the amendments or the way that the chapter forty-two zoning was written. And just wanted a little more clarification for it. So attached to the agenda tonight, and today you should have received, is six points defining specific areas as to what can be done along with this chapter forty-two zoning requirement. And along with that, there are definitions also attached to what an awning is, what a canopy is, deck is, and it's very helpful. So I think, Will, I'll hand it over to you to the extent that I think you guys did a very good job here on identifying this. And hopefully, all the commissioners have had a chance to read through this. And Will, is there anything else you want to add to this?
Well, I've I've got some spots prepared and I can just kind of run through it relatively quickly.
Fantastic. I think that's great.
So as as Hill said, so the the purpose of this started as really looking at gutters. But we have expanded it a little bit. What we're proposing does include, it doesn't include gutters, but it includes some other things. It's what we're calling structural projections. And by that, we mean things that are attached to a house or to to a business building that that would go beyond the setback problem. So number one, the purpose being to clarify the allowance of these projections into the minimum required yards and and kind of use the term yard and setback interchangeably. Basically, the setback is the prescribed distance from the property line. It's a distance measurement, whereas the yard is kind of, it's it's the space. It's the space in between the property line and the and the setback line. But since it functions as the same idea, this, you know, the aim of this is to provide for clear or for more clear and consistent regulation of projecting features. And then also, our our hope is that it will provide for increased opportunities for property owners to construct these these projections that would enhance the use in the aesthetic of the building. So the we basically have six different types of projections that we've accounted for here. The awnings, canopies, skids, gutters, architectural features, which would include things like bay windows, fireplaces, chimneys, decks, porches, and entry, entry roads or entry roadways. All right, so awning and canopy, we have proposed definitions for each. Really, the law of street is awning would mean a permanent roof-like structure that reflects from the wall of the building, covered with a material design intended for protection from the weather or as a decorative embellishment, including those types which can be retracted, folded, or collapsed against the face of this supported building. And also have canopy. Canopies. Very similar, really, kind of the difference being in the definitions of an awning can be retracted. Idea of it is that it could potentially be retracted or brought back. But as it as it's outlined in this proposed code, they're they're treated the same way in terms of the allowed projections on the building. Okay, eaves and gutters, we defined gutter, but based on a request from the development subcommittee, we have proposed a definition for eve. Meaning the underside, the projection of a roof beyond the outer wall of the building. Bay windows, I was disappointed. I don't have a good picture of a chimney or a fireplace, which was, I'll have to I'll have to add that before it goes to public hearing. But, you know, bay windows, chimneys, fireplaces, those are architectural features.
Are these pictures of curiosity, Will, from our, like, in our area?
No, these are from Wikipedia compass.
Okay. You just go around and take pictures of houses in the area and publicize them.
I want to see my house up there.
Yeah, I know, like, who would act there? You can come take a picture of my eaves.
Okay, my eaves are nice.
Deck. And this was discussed at the subcommittee level. So at least for me, when I think of a deck, I think of the back of the house. When I think of a porch, I think of the front. What we have done is really deck means it doesn't have a roof. It's not covered. Whereas a porch does have a roof. So uncovered on the front, that would be a deck. So it doesn't relate to where it is on the building. It really relates to whether or not it's covered. That's that's how this is distinguished.
Got it. That makes sense.
With our code, certainly, sort of your preferred nomenclature, I I'm sure a lot of people would say that doesn't make sense to have a uncovered porch there. And then finally, inch or eight hood. This is, we can kind of get into if if you want. Again, the advice is to have something that's really kind of as minimal as possible, but if nothing else is going to work, you can still potentially add one of these to an exterior wall to have some protection from that. So the way the proposed code for the proposed amendment works out is each of these different categories of projections has a specified maximum projection from the building. Deck and porch are the biggest, whereas the eaves, gutters, inch or eight woods are really just three feet. Some of these numbers were tweaked a little bit based on conversations with the development subcommittee. These are the sort of the numbers as they as they currently stand and were recommended out of the development subcommittee. So so you see the maximum projection distance given. And then there is also a a specified minimum distance that must be maintained from the front, the rear, and the side property lines.
You're getting fancy.
I'm trying. This isn't fancy at all. Okay, so the first thing that was made made apparent out of development subcommittee is to make it clear that those specified distances or projections from the building, they don't apply in a situation where, so the red would be the setback lines, the minimum setback lines. They don't apply in a situation where the house and the projection don't approach upon the setback line. So these allowable projections, for instance, for a deck, might say ten feet. But if your house is twenty or thirty or fifty feet from the setback line, you can have your, you can have your deck or your porch or anything as far as far off the house as you want. Because you're not coming into the setback, so you're not creating what we're calling here an allowable projection into the yard. It's just, it's something you're constructing and doesn't doesn't mess with any setbacks. So there's there's no hindrance on how big a porch or a deck or a canopy or awning you can have if the setbacks aren't in play and you're not approaching into a required yard. Where it comes into play is if, so this, you know, this is this is supposed to be the road of the street. This is the front. So if this is the required setbacks. So apparently, the house, the structure is meeting all the required setbacks from the rear and the two sides. Let's say it's, you know, it's about two or three feet off of that setback line. So in that case, if you were wanting to do a ten-foot covered porch off the front, at that point, it would become a projection to the specified yard. So at that point, that ten feet would come into play. Now, the way it's written, it's 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 ten feet. It's it's not ten feet once you get to the setback line. It's ten feet from the building. Once you're creating a projection into the yard, then for it to be allowable, it would be limited by the numbers that are specified here in this in this first part. Now, the minimum distances from the property lines that are specified, that would come into play in a situation like this where the house we've built, the required setback has not changed. So you currently have a non-conforming structure that doesn't doesn't even meet the current setback. So at that point, we're still going to be limited to that distance, that that, again, for porch, that ten feet. Which are also, at this point, going to be limited to the specified distance from the property line. So to, you know, in this situation, let's say you're at fifteen feet from your front property line. But you can't come out with a full ten because the code also says you have to be at least ten feet from the front. So in that in that situation, five feet would be the maximum you could come off. So the idea being there, you know, you know, in this situation, you're probably not going to really even need any of this language because you're going to have plenty of space to work with. If you're in this situation, you know, either either this or this, it goes back to giving owners the ability to do some some stuff, some additions to the property, particularly in this case, while still preserving some of those standards for separation and distance and safety inference from the former neighbors and from the former owner.
And the other thing we talked about too is easy enough to to be able to have some of these older homes make enhancements and with giving clear guidance as to what they can do. I have an older home. I want to put a porch on. What can I do? Okay. I have a home with a huge backyard and I want to put a big deck on. What can I do? And I think it adds a lot of clarification and guidance and allows them, like we talked in the subcommittee, enhancements to be made. And not only new homes are being built, but in older homes that maybe their hands were tied before it. And this is nice and clear as to what we can and can't do.
So that was it for my vote of where you're standing. I think several of you were in the subcommittee, but if there's any questions and comments.
Well, I mean, one. I thought you did a great job. I'm just, I'm thinking, if you're going to use these slides for the public hearing, which I think would be helpful if you wanted to do that. I'm just curious if on these slides here, you don't have to draw. I'm just curious if on these slides here, um, you don't have to draw the porch. But if you could put like lines, so like on the next one, like on that one, and then when the house moves. If you could put like a line, like porch would go here because, and it's five feet from the, um, road, which then makes it a ten-foot porch or something like that. I wonder if that would be helpful for folks to see. But I really liked that you had the slide with the main house. I think it made it pretty clear what you were talking about. So I appreciate your hard come slides.
And not to complicate it, but if you did have the porch drawn and.
You are not, now I can heal cap, please.
Hey, hey, that's right. To the extent, gee, man, look at the dimensions there. It says from the porch, it's staying this long or this wide.
Oh, goodness.
When you finish that and you come to my house, because I have something in mind, I'd like to show you.
Yeah, no, what's it?
I, I think, I, I think this is great. Who wasn't in the, um, subcommittee meeting?
Who was not?
Who was not?
Oh, I was not.
Okay.
So great.
Okay. All right, so I'm looking to you guys. Does this make sense?
It does to me because it's having some construction experience that brings it more out to color what I would normally see. And I, I was really surprised to find out that some of the setbacks were what they were.
Right.
Very, very.
Sketchy.
Yeah.
Unclear.
Encumbrance. So this is more of what is normal to them.
How about you guys?
Well, the one question I had, there was a specific gentleman that brought this to our attention during that public comment. Correct? Did he have input in the committee's meeting at all or? I didn't see his name.
He didn't, I mean, I've, I've, I've kept him in, I've kept him informed of the progress. And when I started, I'll probably, yeah, to that, yeah, I can reach out.
I just want to make sure.
But this is kind of where this is going to set up before we take it to public hearing. That one we should, we should.
Because I can give you my opinion, but I don't have the construction background. I didn't either. I asked a lot of questions. And so it might be good, that's a great point, because if you can have feedback from somebody in the community who was already thinking about this. And so, so look at the wording to see, like, Ashley was like really good at like, what's the whole, like, oh goodness, you know? And so he might have, or they, I don't know, I don't know if I'm there for that. But, um, the person might have some thoughts about maybe, maybe to tighten up any wording on the definition.
Yeah. Can the recent developers that have been here to, maybe reach out to them and send them a copy of it and say, you know, does this make sense? You guys are building all these houses and then. So, um, and, and so next step, Will. We take this and we have a public hearing. We present this to the public hearing. And then, um, we, if the public doesn't disagree or have changes, then this is something we wrote on?
Correct. I mean, this would be something that's, um, you know, after a public hearing, after receiving any feedback from the public, after further consideration from you all, then you all would make a recommendation to council.
To council, right. Is that a council? And then we'd have a public hearing as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, I think it looks great and I, I love the slides. Any other comments on this? Okay. Moving on to other business.
Will, so everybody got a free mask. Those were.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I believe everybody in the county did something, who's going to have an opportunity to get one, I think. I think the two towns in the county, I don't know if Virginia Tech was a part of this.
We are, we have the things on our doors and.
Yeah, they started rolling up the masks.
So it's, yeah, so it's, it's, you know, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a messaging thing just to kind of friendly way it is, just kind of spread camaraderie about mask wearing and support and public health. Jennifer mentioned it, Andrew, I think you all, uh, know, I bet. He would like to come to present the placemaking plan that Jennifer mentioned to you all. We do not currently have any plans scheduled for our next meeting, which will be August 31st. I think it would work just fine to do it in our September meeting. However, I kind of wanted to put it out to you all. For placemaking plan, it's, there's a lot there. There's a lot of great visuals, there's a lot of detail. So I don't want to, I don't want to ask you all to attend the meeting simply for, if we could accomplish this at a, at a future meeting. Well, it would like to get, you know, any of, any of the ones moving. That would be good timing for, for planning. Why don't we, the public hearing before, um, the zoning change? It would likely probably be our first meeting in September. Correct? So anyway, so if you really want to have the time to do, kind of, dive into the placemaking plan, I think you could do that. Like, I just think it would be good.
Can you elaborate on what, what, what exactly that is, the placemaking?
So it's really a small area plan. It was Jennifer and James, they, they put a lot of great work. So it looks in detail like, like downtown, like in real, in the new town. And the new town area is defined as essentially a black center. The kind of down to, I see, the Rexon and Bank, the blacks and that, that core work. So each one has a number of renderings or mockups and it's been followed out with ways, you know, for future growth, future development opportunities, for these focusing on different things, reuse and diversity, connectivity, new developments. And so obviously there's a lot of overlap in this, but there's, there's differences to it.
We did, uh, obviously close to here with more time to practice.
Well, that would be the idea is, I mean, you really could, a presentation would be right. I guess, yeah, I mean, if you all really like to have, take the time, we, that would be, what you do is, like, uh,
I will say, I mean, I enjoyed having time to brush again. I mean, recognizing that we didn't have a public hearing, but I think it gave us an opportunity to ask some good questions. And I don't know about y'all, but I feel like this is the area that I really want to be informed on as we go forward and make sure that I, am thinking about all these different pieces. And so, so if people were open to it, I think I would enjoy the opportunity to have time just to dive into it and ask some of the questions that way I feel informed as a project commissioner. Like where we should be focusing our time and kind of how we should be informing our future policy.
Totally agree.
I don't know.
Well said.
I don't know what time it is. I think I've been up since five, so. I don't know what it's like.
I know what I'm saying, but it's not Tuesday.
Other business?
Additional for the. The only other thing I would say is, uh, town council approved the, the request by, um, on the school board for the garage facility. Uh, they also approved the request on the, that request was the applicant at the town council stage, they were three persons, they were three, they, uh, removed one unit, it was seven, it was eighteen, the law is with the seventh. They also made two lots, they joined the heights, so they were on the side. Marked with the ones that were more large.
No other further, um, business?
I just want to share, since y'all have an email, Dialogon Race is doing the online summer summit next Saturday, August twenty-fourth. I believe that four, not four thirty, but it's four. But, um, the registration will be in your email if you are interested in. Next, this coming Saturday, this Saturday, August, August twenty-second at four o'clock, and it will be online, I believe it is, or not Facebook live. And are they still doing the monthly dialogue on race meetings or is that, because I know that's not back in, I think, much. They've been doing a lot of things online, so they have been having, um, conversations and presentations and sessions online. So I know I, I put them up on my Facebook and so I'm constantly getting notifications about all the different things. But I also think hopefully Will will have it also from the practice of project commissioner, if I'm correct. It'll be somewhere on the docket.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No other business? Uh, this meeting is adjourned.